Good evening, everyone. This is Mary Ellen McKay, Chair of the City of Nashua zoning board, excuse me, of Adjustment. And this is the April 12th, 2022 zoning board meeting. This evening's meeting will be conducted in a hybrid format. The meeting is accessible in person in the third floor auditorium of the Nashua City Hall, 229 Main Street, and via Zoom at the link posted in all public meeting agendas. Attendance via telephone is available using the Zoom connection details. Minutes of tonight's meeting, as well as audio and video recordings, will be available later at Nashua.gov/AgendaCenter, and please select the zoning board of adjustment. If anyone has a problem accessing the meeting, please call 603-589-3056, and they will help you connect. In the event the public is unable to access the meeting via the methods mentioned above, the meeting will be adjourned and rescheduled. The Chair is in control of the proceedings and calls upon all who wish to speak in order as their raised hands are observed. The Board follows the meeting protocols, procedures identified in its bylaws. The applicant will present their case for 15 minutes, followed by questions by the Board. Next persons wishing to speak in favor or with questions or opposition will be asked to speak for up to five minutes. If there are questions or opposition, the applicant will have five minutes to present a response. Finally, one and only one person with questions or an opposition will be permitted to speak again before the Board deliberates and determines an outcome. A timer is used to manage speaking time. Kate Poirier, our zoning board coordinator, will notify us when one minute is remaining and again when the speaker's time has expired. If you are participating by Zoom and wish to speak when public input is requested, please use the raise hand option, which can be found under Reactions on a computer or the More menu on a phone. The Chair will call you in turn. Please use the lower hand option when you have completed your questions or comments. Please mute your microphone until called to speak. Note that all votes that are taken during this meeting shall be done by roll call. Tonight, we will be hearing requests for deviation from the Nashua zoning code in the form of applications for special exceptions and/or variances. A special exception is a request that seeks permission to do something that the zoning ordinance permits only under special circumstances. To grant a special exception, five points of law are required to be met. These are outlined in the application and will be summarized in Board motions. A variance is a request that seeks permission to do something that ordinance does not permit. Variances also have five points of law to be met, different from those for special exceptions. For the City of Nashua bylaws and State of New Hampshire revised statutes, a minimum of three or more affirmative votes are required to approve any application. In addition, this Board will hear all scheduled cases if a quorum of three voting Board members is present at this meeting. Any citizen has the right to contest the decision that this Board makes. Should we render a decision that you believe is in error, you have the right to request a rehearing. A written rehearing request must be received by the City of Nashua Planning Department within 30 calendar days from the date of decision. Should this Board not grant a rehearing request, you can file an appeal directly to the New Hampshire Superior Court. Please contact Mr. Falk of the Planning Department for more information. For this meeting, we have the following full Board members in attendance. Myself, Mary Ellen McKay, the Chair. We have Mr. Jack Courier is our Vice Chair, Mr. J.P. Boucher, and Mr. Rob Shaw. We have the following alternate members in attendance, Mr. Jay Minkara and Mr. Nick Knakis. In addition to Board members, we also have with us Mr. Carter Falk, Deputy Planning Manager, and Ms. Kate Poirier, zoning coordinator. I announced who was here. Now I'm going to ask them for the record to acknowledge by name that they are either that they're present. Mr. Jack Courier.
Jack Courier is present, and I serve as the clerk, just a minor clarification there about the Vice Chair.
Oh, did I say Vice Chair? I apologize. Mr. J.P. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher is present.
Mr. Rob Shaw.
Mr. Shaw is present.
Mr. Jay Minkara.
Mr. Minkara is present.
Mr. Nick Knakis.
Mr. Knakis is present.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay. Mr. Carter Falk.
Mr. Falk is present.
Ms. Kate Poirier.
Kate Poirier is present.
Thank you. Tonight, we have four regular members and two alternates. And so each one of the alternates will vote at different meetings. I will start with Mr. Knakis, and then the next one will be Mr. Minkara. We'll alternate and accept that during our deliberations, all Board members, whether you are a regular Board member or an alternate, you'll have the option or the honor to speak. Everyone has an ability to state their personal opinion, and we actually enjoy that. So I will now read case number one into the record. And again, Mr. Knakis, you will be voting on this case. Okay? Thank you. There's my cheat sheet. Did you put the only thing I don't have? That's what I was looking for. Mr. Falk, never mind. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No, there are not.
Thank you very much. Case number one. Daniel and Nicole Campbell, owners, 34 Whitford Road, Sheet C, Lot 1640, requesting special exception from land use code section 190-16E3A for a minor encroachment to encroach up to five feet into the 20-foot required side yard setback to construct and attach 28-by-27.5-foot garage addition with rooms above. This is in the R30 zone in Ward 5. Is there somebody here to present this case? If you would please approach the microphone, state your name and address for the record, please.
Good evening. Dan Campbell, 34 Whitford Road. Would you like me to just continue?
Absolutely. The floor is yours, sir.
It's first time here, so I appreciate all of your attention and time tonight. We are looking to, and you have all the materials in front of you, but we have a little over 1,500-foot square foot, sorry, cape with my wife and three children. For obvious reasons, we're looking to expand some of our living space as well as add a two-car garage. The issue primarily is when the house was originally built on the lot, it was sort of built off-center, to the right, if you're looking at the house, and that is the side of our driveway. And so that's the side of the house that the addition would be proposed on, and that's where that space is tighter, requiring the special exception for the additional four and a half feet, I believe it is, total. I believe I've shared a letter with our neighbor directly to our right, who would be most impacted by the addition, who is comfortable and in agreement with the plans as drawn up and shared with you in the package. Our house is also probably one of the smaller houses in the neighborhood and in the minority when it comes to not having a garage, so by adding a garage, become more sort of akin with the other houses in the neighborhood. So I will, I guess I'll stop there. Are there any questions around the need or the problem that we're facing?
Mr. Courier.
Just wanted to clarify, you had mentioned about your butters. Would those be the folks at 38, number 38?
That's correct.
Okay, so they're the ones immediately on your right?
That's right.
Okay, thanks for clarifying that.
Yep.
It's the only question I had.
I don't see any other questions.
Okay.
You're good.
I appreciate the time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And now I will ask if there's anybody here present who would like to speak in favor of this application. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? I have the letter that Mr. Campbell referenced, and it says, "To the Nashua zoning board, I, Stephen Sokel of 38 Whitford Road, am aware of the special exception requested by Daniel and Nicole Campbell at 34 Whitford Road and have no objections to the plan submitted." And he signed and dated that as of April 8th, 2022. Is there anyone here who has any questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this Is there anyone?
Can I just, sorry, procedural thing before we completely close out? This is a question for staff, I guess, but is there a reason it's listed as a special exception and not an area variance?
Yes. There is a section in the code that allows for minor encroachments in all residential zoning districts to be brought forth to the Board as a special exception, as long as they have a monumented survey. And Mr. Campbell does have a survey that was recently done, a testing to the exact dimensions, so he can apply as a special exception and not a variance. We don't get very many of them. I think we've had three.
It just caught my eye all of a sudden. I appreciate the clarification and learned something new tonight, once again.
Yeah, we're all doing that tonight.
Thank you.
See, Mr. Campbell, you're not the only one. Is there anyone on Zoom who has any comments, concerns, or objection to this application? I don't see anything. Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Knakis.
I don't have much on this one. I think it's a fairly straightforward case. It seems to have met all the special exception criteria, so I'm in support.
Mr. Shaw.
I am likewise, and I think, you know, this house is situated, as noted by the applicant, somewhat skewed to that side. That's the natural side for this addition, and so I think that's the kind of special condition of the land as well.
Mr. Boucher.
I don't have anything else to add, and I'm in full support of the application.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
In short, I'm in support. I'd just like to say that I concur with the application as written and presented tonight in that there's many large homes with, you know, good-sized garages, and this is really kind of one of the smaller homes, so I do think it would be looking more in-kind. And also, the property has a bit of a topography challenge, you might say, which is why I think the house is situated where it is, and it doesn't make sense, I think, to, you know, have the homeowner move the driveway, so to speak, to accommodate that. And also, it's downhill from the abutting property, which I thought was 36, but it's 38, and so that, to me, also minimizes the impact of the minor encroachment, so I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara.
And I'm also in support of the application for all the reasons stated.
Thank you. And I concur myself. Mary Ellen McKay, I'm also in support of the application for all the aforementioned reasons. Would somebody care to make a motion? Thank you, Mr. Boucher.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special exception for Daniel and Nicole Campbell, owners of 34 Whitford Road, Sheet C, Lot 1642, requesting special exception for land use code section 190-16, section E, subsection 3, subsection A, for a minor encroachment into, to encroach up to five feet into the 20-foot required right side yard setback to construct an attached 28-by-27.5-foot garage addition with rooms above. It's in the R30 zone, Ward 5. We find that it is listed in the table of uses. We find that it will not create undue traffic congestion or undue impaired pedestrian safety. We find it will not overload public water, drainage, sewer, or other municipal system. We find that all the special regulations are fulfilled. We find it will not impair the integrity, be out of character with the neighborhood, or be detrimental to health, morals, or welfare of residents. Again, we find that this addition will be in character with the neighborhood. And again, just to reiterate, as we just found out, that this is coming out of special exception because there is a survey done, that was done. So with that, I make a motion to approve the special exception.
Thank you. And do we have a second? Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Mr. Knakis, how do you vote, sir?
Mr. Knakis votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
And myself, Mary Ellen McKay, I also vote in favor. Mr. Campbell, that is a unanimous decision. Congratulations. Your special exception has been granted. Please understand, though, that any decision made by this Board can be challenged or appealed within 30 days. Should you have any questions or comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk in the Planning Department. Other than that, congratulations and thank you. I will now read the second case into the record. Edward A. Brusseau, owner, 141 West Hollis Street, Sheet 87, Lot 4, requesting variance from land use code section 190-44 to exceed maximum fence height, six feet permitted, eight feet proposed, for the entire 163-foot length of west side of the lot. This is in the RB zone. This is in Ward 4 and in the RB zone. And Mr. Minkara, you will be voting in this case. Is there someone here to present this application? Please, sir, step up to the podium and state your name and address for the record. You can adjust the mic up or down to your convenience, you know, where it makes it easier for you.
My name is Ed Brusseau, and I own 141 West Hollis Street. I've owned it for several decades, and I do have a request for a variance, of course. The variance being an eight-foot fence. Like I say, I've owned the property, and I've got it bounded by six-foot stockade, except for the area in question. And the reason for that is I've been there for many years, and at 143 West Hollis Street, Mr. Pombaro, who owned that until November of last year, we were kind of friendly, and I didn't need to put a fence there between him and me. November came, this past one, and Mr. Pombaro, unknown to me, sold his property, 143, and sold it to a, someone that runs halfway houses for drug rehabilitation and alcoholism. So right now, there's approximately 15 to 18 male, there's no female, they're all males, living in that house, and things have changed. It's, they hang around into the driveway, which is their prerogative, but that's their own yard, and they smoke, and then cigarette butts go on our property. And I try and keep up, especially my daughter, trying to keep up the property with raspberry bushes and stuff like blueberry bushes. And when it snowed a couple months ago, they would take the snow and throw it on our bushes. It's just not like it used to be. It's very uncomfortable because we are close. I do have pictures, in fact, there's one there, and you can see where the fence is requested. There's one thing about the synopsis on my case, it's not 163 feet, it's 125. The length of the fence would be 125 feet. I initially said 163 because it does go that far, but I don't have to go that far, okay? So like I say, I'm bounded by three sides, and I'd like that fourth side. Not that these people are bad. I mean, I've talked to them and everything, but it's just what's going on. It is a very uncomfortable situation. They're all male, they had their problems, they get out into the driveway, and of course, there's probably 10 of them out there, and you know how men are, I guess. They speak, they swear. The swearing is something else, it really is. And the squealing of tires, a couple of them have trucks, and they spin their tires in the driveway, making a lot of noise, and that is something that is very annoying. And like I say, the swearing and the uncomfortableness. So that's why I would like to have an eight-foot fence, just to kind of conceal that as much as I can. That's basically my story.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Minkara.
So you can build a six-foot fence by right. Why would a six-foot fence not be adequate?
Most of these guys are over six feet tall. They're young males, not all of them, but they are very tall. I figure an eight-foot fence, plus the home at 143, has windows that look out into the yard. Of course, there's some up above. I can't put a 30-foot fence up there, but the higher I can go, the best, and I figured an eight-footer would kind of serve me a little bit more than a six-footer.
Thank you.
No other questions? There's no other questions, sir?
No more.
No more. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of this application? Is there anyone on?
There was somebody there.
Oh, okay. I, so I hesitated.
My name is Deloria Gamash. I live at 141 West Hollis. I just want to add another reason for the eight foot rather than six, being with all of those people living in that house, you can imagine the amount of trash that is accumulated throughout the week, and it goes on that side of our, where we can see it, higher and higher and higher every day. A six-foot, I'd still be seeing it, the top of it, no doubt. That's just another reason why eight would be better. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak in favor of the application? Seeing none, is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? I don't see anything either. Is there anyone here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? None? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? I don't see anything. Then I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Shaw.
I think, I guess I'm in support of this. I feel like, you know, things have changed, obviously, with the property next door. I think that the, there's no known opposition to this. I think a chance to provide the Brusseaux with a little bit of relief, I think, is a reasonable request, and I think it's specifically for the area where they're having concerns. So I do find support for the application.
Mr. Boucher.
I also find support for the application for the reasons Mr. Shaw stated, and also having noticed other residences' use for this type of thing, which is good, you know, for people, but knowing that it, you know, in other areas, I know that there's lots of cars parked on lawns and stuff, and so I can understand what the applicant is saying. And having driven by, I did notice once in the past week, you know, that it was pretty congested there, kind of. So I would agree with that. I'd also like to offer up for myself that I wouldn't want to reduce the footage that they're asking for. I would ask that we just, I would have liked to approve the application as it is, 163 feet. I think that, you know, what he's, I think, suggesting is maybe not going to the rear of the property, but I think I would want, leave that opportunity there, and I don't think that would affect really anybody at that point. So that would be my suggestion if we move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Courier.
I'm in support of the application also. I mean, interestingly enough, you know, it's a one-way street where you go in front of it, and this is on kind of the, you won't see it that much. One of the reasons, I think, we have the six-foot requirement is so we don't have these tall fences kind of blocking a view, but there wouldn't be any view or trouble created with traffic. And again, on that side, on the proposed side where the chain link fence is now, you really wouldn't see it much from West Hollis Street. And, you know, I do see a bit of a special condition in the abutting property, has such little space that the side yard ends up becoming a very, you know, congested spot, and I think that's a little bit a unique situation that's changed in time. So I find that as a reason to support the eight feet as well.
Mr. Minkara.
I can appreciate the concerns of the applicant, but I don't support the application. I think when I look at the properties themselves, they seem to be, you know, pretty consistent with other properties in the area, in the neighborhood, in terms of their size. The neighborhood overall has a mix of different uses, multifamily, single-family, two-family. No doubt, this use is intense, and I can totally appreciate the concern, but I, you know, ultimately, I don't think that annoying neighbors are a sufficient reason to grant the variance. It's not a condition in the property itself, it's an activity that's happening next door. So for that reason, I don't support the application.
Thank you. Mr. Knakis.
I'm in support of the application. We have testimony from the applicant that the additional heights need for his privacy and for noise insulation, it's not a spite fence in any means, it's just to get additional privacy from his neighbors, and I agree with Mr. Boucher as well, that we should maintain the full length of the fence in considering the variance. So I'm staying in support.
Thank you. And I too am in support of the application, and I too agree with Mr. Boucher on extending because you never know if you're going to go all the way, half, part of the way, so I concur with that. Also, it could be a safety issue if there was somebody over six foot tall that could just look over or throw something over that fence. What if there was a young child in the yard? So I concur with the support on this application. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Boucher. Thank you.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the area variance for Edward A. Brusseau, 141 West Hollis Street, Sheet 87, Lot 4, requesting a variance in land use code section 190-44 to exceed maximum fence height, six feet permitted, eight feet proposed, for the entire 163 feet, 163-foot length of west side of lot. It's in the RB zone, Ward 4. We find that the variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of property, given the special conditions of property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. Again, the fence is being requested for purposes of shielding activities from next door, and again, it's more of... And again, it's more of a benefit because of the use that we find is, the use that's being, the use of the neighbor's property is intense. And the approvers of this application find that this warrants the fencing also. Also noted that the fencing will not inhibit any vehicle traffic or site distances from vehicles traveling down that, down West Hollis Street. We find that it is within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. We find it will not adversely affect property values surrounding parcels. Find that it's not contrary to public interest, and we find that substantial justice will be served. So again, I make a motion to approve the area variance.
And thank you, Mr. Shaw, for your second. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Minkara, how do you vote?
Mr. Minkara votes not in favor.
And Mary Ann McKay votes in favor. That is four to one. Mr. Bouchet, your application has been granted. Congratulations. As we will state all evening, any decision by this board may be appealed. And so, should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Falk. They have a 30-day window. So, other than that, we have granted your request for the full 163 feet. Okay? So thank you very much for your application. Case number three. 45 Broad Street Properties owner, Gillian Arsenault applicant, 45 Broad Street, Sheet 61, Lot 169, requesting variance from Land Use Code Section 190-16. Table 16-3 for minimum open space, 50% required, 50% existing, 33% proposed to add additional parking spaces to north and east side of existing garage. This is in the RA Zone in Ward 4. And Mr. Kanakis, you will be voting on this case. Is there someone here to present this application online? Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Gillian Arsenault. This is my husband, Andrew, and our address is 45 Broad Street.
Okay, you, the floor is yours. If you could stay close to your microphone so we can hear you loudly and clearly.
Okay, so we are looking to expand our lot. We recently purchased this in November of last year. And we are running into an issue of not having enough employee parking. There's really no other place to park. We have been parking on the grass for the winter or when it was snow, on the snow. And we have too many clients coming in, which is a good thing for business. And I'd not want to turn them away if there is not enough parking. We have had quite a few site contractors come in to give us quotes and the best plan of action to move forward with this if approved. We have special drainage that will be put in so we don't affect any of the neighbors' yards. We already have an existing nice six-foot fence around the property anyway. We would keep that and all of the greenery that is on any neighbor's lines. This would really help us, just not, I'm just worried every day that someone is going to come to our business and not have a place to park. And I just am looking for this extra space to help alleviate that.
Have you completed your testimony?
Yes, I'm sorry.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions for the applicant? Mr. Courier?
Yeah, I was just wondering about, you know, the proposed concrete, I guess you'd call it, kind of infiltration basin. I was wondering if that, you know, like, is an engineered piece? Has there been an engineer to look at the runoff and sign, say that this will handle that and it's graded properly? Because what I see kind of looks like a standard drawing for kind of a standard basin. And I'm just wondering if there is more to the design than that.
I'm going to have my husband speak on this. He is in that construction world, so he can give a better example.
Talking with the paving contractors and site contractors, out of four people, they suggested this drywall was the best unit to be used based on the capacity of 1,500 gallons and preparing for those intense, heavy rains that can possibly come. And having also this type where it is a drywall and having the holes, having, digging in that area a little bit, it's a very high sand concentration. Everybody concurred that this should handle the, what's needed.
Okay, thank you.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant?
I just have a question for staff.
Absolutely, Mr. Courier.
Kind of the same question to you, Mr. Falk. Would this design be acceptable? Like, in terms of, you know, what the city would need or look for in terms of catching the extra runoff?
I would have to defer to the engineering department and/or building department. They would be the ones who are really more qualified to answer that question. I'm not a hydrogeologist or structural engineer to really say one way or the other. But I'm glad that the applicant has gone to the extra mile to find somebody that would handle the drainage and runoff. Or some people just pave things, but, you know, at least they've gone to the extra step of designing something like this, so.
Okay.
It would have to be up to the engineering department.
Does this get reviewed by engineering or not?
I believe they would take a look at it. It would be, it wouldn't be a really building permit from us. It would be an admin review, so they would probably look at it. I would say so.
Okay.
Mr. Minkara?
If I could ask a couple of questions to the applicants. Back to the point on the drywall, you had mentioned that, I guess, the contractors, other people you spoke to, felt that it was adequately sized. Was that based on stormwater calculations? Was it based on any calculations of the volume of additional stormwater that would be generated because of the additional pavement?
Nothing was given to us. They noted that they thought that this was better based on, since it was a sandy soil and letting the water leach down into the ground versus, we didn't want to have the water go back into city streets or diverting any which way. This was the most practical way to allow, you know, we can't change the grades that are pitched towards, looks like a Butters, 23, 25, and 41. And also having a curbing, an asphalt curbing on the backside of that to allow that water to go towards that drain and also grading.
My second question is, is that a parking space on top of the drywall?
Yes, it is. It is a rated, it is a rated drywall.
Thank you.
Mr. Courier?
You had mentioned about, you know, maintaining the fence around the perimeter. And I'm wondering if perhaps a board was, to make that a stipulation. I guess as I look at the property and consider it, if some years go by and the fence kind of falls down, but people are parking there, you know, the noise and the headlights would be, you know, right in the backyard of, you know, kind of forcing the neighbor to do that. And I'm wondering what you would think about a potential stipulation to just maintain a fence, you know, around the perimeter there.
Yeah, I don't think we'd have a problem with that at all. I wouldn't want headlights shining in my yard either. So I think that's completely reasonable.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? Is there anybody in the audience that has any, would like to speak in support of this application? I don't see anyone. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of the application? I don't see anything, Kate. Is there anyone here present who would like to speak in opposition or with questions, comments, or concerns about the application? Don't see anyone. On Zoom, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition with questions, comments, or concerns around this application? I don't see anything, Kate. Seeing nothing, I'm going to close the public hearing and open the public meeting. Mr. Boucher?
Just got a little clarification from staff.
Absolutely.
Mr. Falk, the applicant, were they required to do any stormwater management? So were they required to do any of this?
They weren't required to do any of this. This was their idea. They've had an issue with parking for staff and customers and had some room in their, the back of their garage and came in with this plan for extra parking.
All right, so I guess what I'm driving is that, that they didn't have to present this, the extra, what they're trying to do, actually trying to mitigate the water. It wouldn't have been required for this, for this type of application?
Right, it was not required.
Okay, all right, that's what's going to, so with that, I'm in support of the application. You know, the question remains around, you know, we've seen engineered plans for this. And I think what's kind of, would drive me to, I think what I got the feeling of, the question is, is it's not necessarily engineered. But I do think they're trying to do something extra that is not required. So I wouldn't let that stop me from, you know, supporting the application. So with that, I'll just rest with that.
Thank you. Mr. Courier?
Well, I'm in support of the application. I feel like it's reasonable to have a stipulation to maintain the fence because without it, or a future homeowner or business owner, if they don't want to keep it up, I think it would really put a burden on the neighbors on the backside. So I would support it with that stipulation and of course, the applicant's agreed to it. I was, I didn't know if the infiltration basin was engineered or not. I didn't think it was. You know, it looked like the property pitched that way. And, you know, I certainly appreciate the applicant thinking of that because my thought is if it wasn't there, the water would just sheet right into the backyard where it's not doing that now because to me, it's getting caught in the grassy area that would be paved over. So I'm not hung up that it's not an engineered drawing. And I'm, you know, going on the faith that with the size of it's there, it probably won't be a burden. Likely not be any burden to sheet off on the neighbors. So I'm in support of it. Oh, I wanted to say that I find uniqueness in this property because many businesses, you know, walk-in businesses, if the parking lot's full, you park a little further down. You know, this is kind of like a little island on a busy street. And if the parking lot's full, you know, you're kind of stuck. And I'm pleased that they have a lot of business and wish them the best. But I find that a unique situation where if somebody fools in and there's not a parking spot, they've got to go a long ways in a very busy area of Route 130. So I think that's kind of unique to the situation that warrants the relief.
Thank you. Mr. Kanakis?
I'm also in support of the application. Agree largely with what's been said. It is a difficult thought in terms of parking and access. And they took the extra steps to try to mitigate any impacts of the additional parking area with the drainage well. So I'm in support.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
I likewise am in support. I agree. I think the stipulation makes sense. I probably just make sure we say solid fence. I think that's kind of almost implied, but I just, you know, we'd want to make sure it happened that way. And I also think the whole thing about the, kind of basically dealing with the stormwater is, you know, really, we know that pretty much anytime anybody does anything with their property, they're supposed to not create additional runoff onto somebody else's property from whatever changes have been made. So I appreciate the fact that there's been some thought to working through that upfront, sharing it with us. I mean, we could have seen something that doesn't have even this kind of thing proposed with some assurance that they'll do whatever. Maybe they just put some curbing and have it come back towards the front of the property. Who knows, right? But I appreciate the fact that they were, you know, already contemplating this and doing what you think is inherently expected and required from some sort of action. Even not requiring a variance, but just if this were to happen as a regular modification. So again, I am in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
I'm also in favor. I think it does appear that the additional parking is needed. And again, I appreciate the extra steps that have been taken towards accommodating the stormwater. I'm going to, you know, run on the assumption that the contractors proposed it, sized it, and suggested this particular alternative because they felt it would work. I would also just note this, you know, really unusually shaped piece of property. I think it makes it challenging to cite it in the way that one might, you know, perhaps more efficiently. And I would also note that although it's dropping from 50% to 33%, it abuts a significant amount of open space along the railroad right-of-way, which I think helps mitigate that impact.
Well, I didn't mean to interrupt Mr. Minkara if he isn't, if he has not finished yet, but.
I mean, I was just going to make the other point that there appears to be no objection from any abutting properties as well.
Just to jump on Mr. Minkara's point, that the variance is for open space, they want 33%. The property, even though it's zoned RA, it's a single-family zone, it's really used as a commercial property. And if this were like a GB zone, it would be a 10% open space requirement and they wouldn't even be here.
That's a good point.
Thank you, Mr. Minkara and Mr. Falk. I too am in support of the application for all the aforementioned reasons. Would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'd like to make a motion on behalf of the owner of 45 Broad Street Properties. The applicant is Gillian Arsenault, and the address is 45 Broad Street. Requesting a variance from the Land Use Code, Section 190-16, Table 16-3, for minimum open space where 50% is required, 50% is existing, 33% is proposed, additional parking spaces to the north and east side of the existing garage. This is in the RA Zone. The variance is needed to enable the applicant's proposed use of the property, given the special conditions of the property and the benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other means reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue other than the area variance. It's been noted that this property is uniquely shaped. The business is thriving and there is limited parking to accommodate the employees and patrons. Also been noted, there is not easily available or accessible parking anywhere in the nearby vicinity that would accommodate overflow parking in any fashion. The, also, this is, as Mr. Falk noted, 10% would be allowed if this were in a GB zone and this business is functioning very much like that. This area is kind of transitional between business and residential already. So it's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance. There's no indication of any negative effects on surrounding parcel property values. It's not contrary to public interest. Substantial justice would be served. We'd also like to add a stipulation that a solid fence would be maintained as is currently to provide some visual barrier to the adjoining properties. And with that, I move to approve this area variance.
Thank you. And thank you, Mr. Boucher, for your second. Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Courier, how do you vote?
Mr. Courier votes in favor.
Mr. Kanakis, how do you vote?
Hi, Mr. Kanakis votes in favor.
Hi, Mr. Kanakis votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
And myself, Mariel McKay, I also vote in favor. So that is five to zero. That is a unanimous decision. Mr. and Mrs. Arsenault, your variance has been granted. Please understand that any decision made by this board can be appealed within 30 days. So should you have any questions, comments, or concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Warrior in the Planning Department. Again, congratulations on your variance and thank you. We will now move to case number four. Is everybody good? Okay. Lawrence Berger, owner, 5 Scotia Way, Sheet C Lot 1736, requesting the following: A determination whether a material change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred, or that the application is for a use that materially differs in nature and degree from the variance for a driveway that was denied by the ZBA on July 28th, 2020. And if so, variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-17E1, to exceed maximum driveway width, 24 feet permitted, 19 feet existing, an additional 10-foot wide driveway proposed on the right side of lot for a total width of 29 feet. This is in the R9 zone in Ward 5. And is there somebody here to present this application? Well, this is, well, the Fisher v Dover.
First, and we have to do that first, I believe.
So we then determine if, do we want them to explain what they're doing or make a decision whether we think there's a material change?
The applicant needs to describe how they meet the Fisher versus Dover requirements first, and then the board deliberates and votes on that. And if the board supports it, then he can go forward with the variance. If not, then the variance is not heard.
Okay, so then first, we would need to hear from him about how his application is materially different from his initial application. Okay, then again, we are going to have to have the applicant step up, state your name and address for the record, and explain how this is materially different from the previous application.
Good evening, Board, Lawrence Berger, 5 Scotia Way. So basically, I went for a variance for a garage a couple of years ago, got denied because of the auxiliary use permit or the auxiliary use. So in order to rectify that situation, I had to remove my pool, which has been done, and I had to add square footage to my house, which I finished my basement. Certificate of occupancy has been signed off on that as well, which gave me 1,260-some-odd square feet of auxiliary use, which I'm only asking for 1,200. And that's what the access for the extra driveway is for the 29 feet. So basically, five feet needed because my existing driveway's 19, adding 10 feet on the right side to gain access to the garage for that purpose.
Does anyone have any questions? Okay, now, do we revert to a meeting as opposed to a hearing?
Well, you should ask if there's anyone in the audience or on Zoom who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to just the Fisher versus Dover part, and then go from there.
Okay. So is there anyone here who would like to speak in favor of the Fisher v Dover rationale? If you would please step to the microphone, state your name and address for the record.
Good evening, Adam Varley, 3 Scotia Way, Nashua, New Hampshire. So I'm direct to butter to the left of Mr. Berger. I'm the one from whom the letter came that you received yesterday, so I apologize, by the way, for sending that last minute, but I wasn't sure whether I'd have the opportunity to speak to the issue tonight, the procedural issue. And I also thought it would be helpful to put thoughts down in writing. So as I indicated, I understand that this is a request that the board considers from time to time under the Fisher v Dover standard. And as I indicated in the letter, you know, there have been a number of New Hampshire Supreme Court cases that have interpreted the Fisher v Dover standard since that decision was issued 42 years ago. And in particular, as I noted in my letter, I think a case of relevance here is Hill Grant Living Trust versus Kearsarge Lighting Precinct. And in that case, the Supreme Court indicated, first of all, you know, that the zoning laws in the state of New Hampshire had changed significantly in the time since the Fisher v Dover decision, in particular, you know, loosening the standards that are required to meet the test for variance. And in discussing those changes to the zoning ordinance, the Supreme Court indicated that the proceedings of the meeting themselves and the discussion among the board can create the material change in circumstances that would justify a secondary hearing on the same variance request. And I, in addition to having attended the original meeting back in 2020, I did go back and re-listen to the hearing. And as I indicated in my letter, you know, I think there were certainly some expressions about, you know, some of the concerns that existed about the accessory use variance request from that time, and what might be done to address some of those concerns. Mr. Berger has obviously taken significant steps by both removing the pool from his property, finishing his basement, such that he actually doesn't require the variance for the accessory use any longer. And in my view, you know, he shouldn't be, you know, punished as to the second variance request because he no longer needs the first variance request. In other words, I think he's, he made significant changes, material changes in my view, that justify the board considering the driveway variance request again this evening. And finally, I would just say, I think, you know, the essence of the Fisher v Dover decision is sort of the consideration of fairness to the parties and consideration of, you know, finality of decisions. And again, I don't think that at the first hearing on this case, that the board really gave due consideration to the driveway variance request because the accessory use variance request really dominated the consideration. Those abutters who testified in opposition spoke only to the accessory use request relating to the garage during the public meeting. You know, as I noted, a majority of members didn't speak to the driveway issue at all. So I think in fairness to Mr. Berger, he deserves to be heard substantively on the driveway request tonight. It's, again, I don't think that that was, was heard substantively the first time around. So with that said, again, I think in due fairness to Mr. Berger, I would very much be in support of the board hearing the substantive variance request this evening. Thank you.
Did anyone have any questions? Is, is there someone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this Fisher v Dover consideration? I don't see anyone. Is there someone here who would like to speak in opposition to the Fisher v Dover consideration?
Yes, I would like to.
Okay, I, can you please state your name and address for the record? This is just for the board to consider the Fisher v Dover if there is a material change. This is not on the application itself at this point in time. I just want to be clear.
A material change in regards to the driveway? I mean, the only thing I can say is that, yes, Mr. Berger made the changes to his property to no longer need the variance for the land use, but he has subsequently filed a permit looking to build a garage that is 30 by 30 by 35 feet high. So it, that, he is now in violation of a number of other regulations.
I can't see his name. We can't do that right now. All we're trying to figure out and all we're trying to determine is if there is a material change between what was stated previously. This is only on the Fisher v Dover. This is not on a garage or anything else. It's not on the application right now. It's just on, do we have the right to hear the application or should we not hear it? That's basically what we're trying to determine right now.
Okay, well, I did attend that meeting as well on, in July of 2020. And I saw the, this team, this group of people, talk to the driveway and the garage request as separate requests. They were discussed separately, they were denied in separate votes, their rationale for rejecting was provided in separate bulleted lists. And I do think that the driveway was given enough consideration. I think the problem was that Mr. Berger used an excessive amount of time arguing that his interpretation of the land use ordinance is correct and that the interpretation of the audience, of the ordinance for the past 30 years by scores of board members was incorrect. And even the board members who are friendly to his cause commented that Mr. Berger's interpretation was wrong. So I believe the, this, I believe this board did the right thing at the time, but I will stand down at this point.
Thank you.
Oh, yes, my name is Joe Trangali, 12 McDonald Drive.
Thank you. I see another hand raised, is, but I can't see who the name is. It's just too small for me to see.
Hi, is, can you hear me? Yes?
Very faintly, I can hear you. I need you to state your name and address for the record and also to speak.
Sure, my name is Patrick Truvey. I live at 18 McDonald Drive, Nashua. My property abuts Mr. Berger's. Again, I'm not, I'm not a lawyer, so I'm not, I wasn't necessarily prepared to discuss Fisher versus Dover tonight. I want to be sure that me and other abutting properties have our opportunity, maybe not here, but maybe immediately following this, to voice our opposition to Mr. Berger's plans.
That will happen if and when the board determines that the Fisher v Dover criteria has been met. Okay. I don't see anybody else on Zoom, do you? Then I'm going to close the public portion, the hearing of this, open the meeting. And Mr. Minkara, I'm going to lead up with you on do we meet or not meet?
So I will say I'm struggling somewhat with this, but I think my inclination has shifted. In the last case, I think it's arguable that there has been a material change in that they're no longer seeking a variance to construct the garage. However, the flip side of that is this is really substantially the same application that we saw then. The variance is no longer required, if I understand correctly, because the pool has been removed. Every other aspect of it seems to me to be consistent with what we saw before. Just in speaking for myself, I do recall having concerns about the garage, the use size, but also, you know, very much the second driveway, that was definitely something that I thought was material. It wasn't just that this was additional driveway width in the case that we sometimes see where they want a few more feet. This was a second driveway entirely to a different building on the property. And the fact that this is a new driveway to, you know, a new structure remains the same. So, but I'm very interested in hearing what other people have to say, but at this point, I'm leaning towards it's substantially the same.
Mr. Carrier.
I see things differently. I, I felt at the previous meeting that the driveway and the garage were tied together and there was certainly, the bulk of discussion was on the garage. And when, in my mind, I'm just going to kind of summarize it real quick, there was a large, a big ask for the, you know, that was, for the garage. And that did, you know, dominate the discussion. And there was really no thought, well, if the garage doesn't get approved, what about the driveway? Because they went together. So the board, I think reasonably, didn't consider it. I don't think the applicant really thought about it at the time to say, wait a minute, what if I do this and do that? You know, you can't think of all those things in the future on the spot. And a lot of times, Fisher v Dover gets tied into, like, did the street change? Is there more traffic? Is there now a shopping mall in the area? But it also applies to the application itself. And the application before was for, you know, a big request and the driveway. This is just for the driveway, and I see this as materially different. So I think it is a different application and I would think the board should hear it. My two cents.
Mr. Boucher.
I also think that there is enough, there is a material change, and I do believe that we should hear the case. I think we all looked, we're all looking at this from our own lenses, and I do believe that the driveway, to me, was, they were both tied together, but there was an ask there specifically because of the, of the variance needed for the garage. Now that there's no variance needed and there's been significant changes on the property, I think that, to me, is enough for that. Now, you know, what's the threshold? It's probably not really huge, huge difference materially changed, but I think it's enough there that we should hear it.
Mr. Shaw.
I think I'm in a similar spot as Mr. Minkara. I think, though, that just because there's just enough question about things and it's kind of like, and I feel like I have that same kind of like, well, if I just think about it as a driveway, yeah, it seems very much the same. But then there is all the, again, kind of underlying conditions which have changed. And the fact that even that part of it comes up for me feels like, okay, I'd rather defer to the side of caution and proceed with this, knowing that it's certainly not the classic issue of Fisher v Dover, that was trying to make sure, somebody just didn't keep coming back with the exact same application. So enough things have changed with the property that I guess it feels like we tilt that way. And I guess I'm inclined to lean towards saying it meets Fisher v Dover, but not strongly, if that makes sense.
Mr. Kanakis.
I think I'm in about the same boat as Mr. Shaw, where, clearly, I don't think it meets the second option, that the use materially differs. It's going to be the same use as the prior, but I think there's an argument that the change of circumstances affects the merits in that he has made substantial changes to the square footage of the home in order to avoid the need for the area variance for the garage. At the same time, if he felt we had erred as to the driveway issue, there is the avenue of appealing our prior decision within his 30 days back then. But all in all, I'm leaning in, being in favor of beating the Fisher v Dover based on the first criteria of a change in the circumstances affecting the merits of the application.
Okay, well, I'm not so sure. It seems that the material change goes to the garage, it doesn't go to the driveway. And if we, if we looked at just one, just the driveway, which is what he's here to talk about, just the driveway, there's no material change whatsoever. And there was, and as I reread the minutes, when we did separate them out, and there was specifics that called to just the driveway. So I don't know.
Can I ask a question, Staff?
Yes, of course you can. I'm, you know, I'm sitting here just as confused as I think the rest of us are, trying to do the right thing and trying to figure out what that is. Mr. Minkara, I'm sure you want to talk to Mr. Fark.
Just a question, because I think I was a little confused in looking through the application. But was there a new plan submitted? Or is the plan submitted the same plan that was submitted in 2020 with the pool crossed out?
It I believe it's the exact same plan as far as the driveway. If I'm correct.
Yeah, the driveway.
The driveway is the same. It's just the pool is no longer there. And Mr. Berger also.
But every other ask, this is the same plan, the
Same driveway plan.
The pool is just crossed out. Got it.
It was Staff's Staff kind of thought that he did do some significant changes to the property. You know, he got a building permit inspections and the CO for the finished basement and remove the pool. So it was our opinion that at least he should have applied for the Fisher versus Dover to keep moving forward with this. There really weren't any other options.
Mr. Carrier.
I just wanted to throw out another thought. This is back in 2020. You know, I just wanted to make sure I had the right numbers. The maximum accessory use area was 40% and 74% was proposed. And that, to me, was a big ask. I think in general, the board focused on that. I think I did, the garage, and that's a big ask. And the garage goes along with the driveway, is the way I was seeing it. And so I don't think there was much discussion of the driveway, and it was a focus on the garage. And when that, you know, when the board was not in favor of it, you know, it both got denied. And I think the current application, I think it's a rational thing that a property owner could do. It's okay, you know, this got denied. What could I do to, you know, to say, have an application that's in greater compliance and, you know, made amends with the pool and the other living space? So to me, that's kind of, that's a rational and reasonable step. And you still have the driveway issue, which is exactly the same as before. But the application in total, I think, is significantly different because the garage request is not is not is no longer needed. And I see those as tied together. So I'm still, I guess I'm just wanted to clarify that as to why I'm in favor of that it meets the Fisher v. Dover. And I prefer that my vote will be that we hear it and ask you to consider that.
I understand. I just still think that if that was the case, then they should still be together. I mean, and if it's a 30-foot garage, it's 10 feet over the accessory unit dimensions as well. So there's something else that comes into consideration. But if we're to do something that is materially different, everything about the driveway is exactly the same. Nothing has changed. So if we're not to consider the garage, then why are we considering the material space that was accomplished to accommodate the garage? That's my sticking point. Mr. Boucher, I see your hand.
Yeah, I know. It's very difficult. Again, you know, the garage, to me, is off the table now because it's an approved, it would be an approved use now, right? Because it's there's no more, we're not, there's no more overage on accessory. Could I ask Staff a question?
Absolutely.
And let me know if it's not an appropriate question. Mr. Fark, if the applicant was not looking for an extra five feet, so if the applicant met the driveway, total driveway oh and nins, which is 24 feet, would he need to be here to put in a driveway to put in a put in an additional driveway? So if he would have met 24 feet, no matter how that came out, let's just say we reduce the size of the main driveway, and we put in the driveway to this new structure, would he need to be here? Would he need to apply?
No. Everybody gets a maximum of a 24-foot wide driveway. And it doesn't have to be in one driveway. It can be split up into two 12s or a 14 and a 10. However, it's, you know, divvied out. So if he had a 14 and a 10, that would meet the zoning code. There would be no need for a zoning board request. He would still have to work with the DPW and the street department to get a street opening permit, because there is a curb there. And there might be some infrastructure between the curb and his front property line, which is about, I think it's about 17 feet back. So he would still have to work with DPW to get the opening permit. But it wouldn't be a ZBA issue.
So so my point is, what I'm driving to is, is I believe at this point, the material difference is that there's no more tie to that garage. Even though that garage is there or the proposed garage is going to be there, whatever it's going to be, that's a building, I believe, building department, building permitting issue. So now we're just really looking at traditionally what an overage is on a driveway. But we have history that originally, this was going to access the structure in a previous application with this major overage. Now that doesn't exist no more. So this is where I'm coming from is when looking at this is strictly, again, an overage on a driveway. It's not about what may or may not be built in the back of that property at this point, because that's off the table.
Well, except that the whole rationale for the driveway is to access that structure. So it can't be off the table. It's
Well, what I'm saying
That's the whole purpose of the driveway.
Well, I understand. So I think if we were, I think what I'm understanding is if we were to deny this, right? So that's appropriate to deny this, right? If the applicant decided to to rearrange his driveways, rearrange the total footage, he could put in a driveway to access the structure.
Right.
Because because the structure is now in the future here, he's removed all the accessory overages. So the garage could be could be built in the back by the, if he gets his permit from the building department. He would never come here for any approval to build that garage. And if he decided to put a driveway in, so let's say he minimized, he takes driveway away from the other side and puts in a 10-foot driveway on this side. He shortens the width of the driveway on the other side to 14 feet, puts a 10-foot driveway on this side. He doesn't need to come in front of us for that. That's what I'm hearing from the from from Mr. Fark.
Yeah, and that would be his prerogative.
Right.
He could do that. But when it comes to the Fisher v. Dover analysis, what I'm stuck on is that I'm seeing the exact same driveway proposed to access the exact same garage. That's what I'm looking at.
And that's my sticking point. There were two variances, one for the garage and one for the driveway. Now we're just seeing a variance for the driveway, and it is not different at all.
So I understand, yes. And I agree with the statement you made, both both you made made. And I agree with what you're saying. I'm just looking at it differently. I'm looking at it, I think, maybe more in the light of how Mr. Curry described it. So but I was just, you know.
But at the end of the day, I think we're elaborating the point because we've got the votes to rehear it, I'm assuming.
Not necessarily.
Mr. Shaw.
I don't know if you do.
Okay.
Because I'm feeling more swayed by. No, I mean, I think I think it's really hard because there are there's the garage and there's the driveway. And I think that's the point you're getting at. And I thought Mr. Kanakis kind of made point already that, you know, and I agree, that the second criteria, I think, there's, I don't see how that is can be met, except I think it comes down to the first. So it's, I don't think anything material is different in the nature and degree from the variances originally proposed. Everybody's saying it's the exact same driveway. So I'm not, I'm not able to support number two as a reason. But it only has to meet one of these two criteria. So I think the question comes down to, is it a change of circumstances affecting the merits of the application that's occurred? Well, the garage, the proposed garage before was all to do with, couldn't be placed automatically without meeting a variance because of the accessory use percentages. The applicant found a way to take care of that and can build a garage without any issue needed for variance. So that part has changed, but the proposed, even the proposed garage is still the same thing. So I think I'm back to this really is the same request. Something else is, what's, 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 the circumstances that have changed is the garage's need for an area variance or not. Nothing to do with the driveway's need for variance or not. So I don't think anything else.
Mr. Carrier.
I just wanted to clarify that, you know, I think as the discussion of the board at the last case did focus on the garage and not on the merits of the driveway itself because, I guess I'm only speaking for myself, or maybe for Mr. Boucher and I, those, but I think the board had those two elements tied together. And there wasn't consideration of just the driveway if the garage wasn't permitted. When the garage was not approved, the driveway wasn't debated separately. And I guess I interpret question number one as the application before was, again, I see them tied together with it being 74% proposed when 40% is permitted, and the driveway. And this application is just the driveway. And I see that as as a different application. I mean, yes, the driveway component is the same, but the overall application is different. And it's much, much less. It's a request of five feet versus five feet and a 74% accessory use area.
Mr. Shaw.
But the board still considered the driveway request and voted against it. So it's kind of incumbent upon the board to even say, is there is there potential future where that driveway makes sense or not? Especially since all the discussions about the accessory use and possibly how to address that. So so, I mean, maybe this is as much a future kind of guideline to us as a board that we, this is one of those reasons why we should be careful about how closely we tie things together, even when they seem very much mutually tied together. But I mean, I appreciate that. And I think, you know, it makes sense most of the time with stuff like this. The focus would be primarily on the structure and not the driveway. It's kind of somewhat ancillary or secondary. But I think if, really, if the board felt there was still merit in approving the driveway, even if it was just to access the space back there, then it should have been considered and approved. So I, I, so I guess that's all.
Based even in the minutes, we have obviously conversation about the garage, I mean, and the driveway and back and forth. So for me, they were two. They were separate. I don't see the change in circumstances affecting the merits of the application. See, the semantics of it is merits and application, and the application is only about the driveway. And so if I was to narrow my focus as to what I'm being asked to think about, I'm being asked to think about the merits of the driveway, because that's the application. Nothing has changed in the application for the driveway. If the applicant wanted to put in a driveway, he could do as Mr. Boucher said, and shorten one and put the driveway in. No need for the board to weigh in at all. I think what we have to look at is the Fisher v. Dover. Does this meet that criteria? In my mind, it obviously doesn't for number two. And number one, the change in circumstances affecting the merits of the application has occurred. What change in circumstance to the driveway happened to merit this happening? And based on the application, nothing. So when I look at it that way, that's how my thought process works. And that's what makes this process so great, because everybody sees it a little bit different. And you can each give your perspective and perception. And that's what we're doing. That's what I love the most about this process, because it's a meeting of the minds. So I don't know. I'm still, and maybe it is just, it's the language, and I'm listening to the language. Are there any other comments as we beat this one up, as we weigh in? I don't want to shortchange any conversation.
Well, I guess I have to say, I think that test number two is met by the application. The use materially differs. To me, the use is the overall application, which is, which before involved the accessory use area overage and the driveway to to access that. And now that is not present on the application. And I see that as materially different.
But the application for the one variance was the driveway, and this is just the driveway. We're not talking the auxiliary use, not at all.
That's where I see the material change.
And see, and I don't. I want to see the material change in the actual application as proposed. And the actual application as proposed is the same. What is the will? Do we want to attempt a motion? Do we still need to have a discussion? We want to attempt a motion? Okay.
I'll be happy to throw out a motion.
You go first. Mr. Carrier.
I make a motion that the application before us tonight, a change of circumstances has occurred in that the accessory use has been addressed. And so the driveway is now being requested to access an approved use by right at this point. And I find that as a change of circumstance from the last application. And I think, therefore, it meets the Fisher v. Dover test.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Boucher. Mr. Shaw, do you believe that there has occurred sufficient change for us to go forward?
So I'm voting a lot in favor of the motion.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier.
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
Mr. Minkara.
Mr. Minkara votes not in favor.
And Mary Ann McKay votes not in favor. I vote no. Therefore, the board has made a
We need to do the reverse. We need to vote. We need to make a motion.
Oh, we need to make a motion to vote in the
We're not in favor.
Okay. Who would like to make that motion? Mr. Minkara.
I make a motion that the application does not present material change in circumstances. It does not meet the Fisher v. Dover test.
And is there a second? Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Okay. Mr. Shaw, how do you vote on this motion?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher.
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor.
Mr. Carrier.
Mr. Carrier votes not in favor.
Mr. Minkara.
Mr. Minkara votes in favor.
And Mary Ann McKay also votes in favor. So at this point, the board has determined that the material difference has not been met, that circumstances in Fisher v. Dover have not been met. So you have, you know, you can appeal this decision, obviously. It's your property. You can do what you will, sir. I'm sure the board has had many discussions on that. But thank you for presenting. Thank you for bringing it. And thank the board. This was a tough one.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
All right, we'll move on to, and to let the people on Zoom know who are here for this case, the board will not be moving forward with the application as presented. Okay. Case number five.
Can I ask a question? Or is it?
No, I'm sorry.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. If you have questions, please re-refer If you have questions, please refer to Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier in the Planning Case number five. Oh, God, I'm going to kill this name. I just know it. Weiverson Rojo?
Oh, Rojo.
Owner, sixty-five, sixty-seven Gilman Street, sheet ninety-four, lot seventy-four, requesting use variance from land use code one-nine-zero-dash-one-five, table one-five-dash-one, number one-oh-two, to allow an esthetician, esthetician's office in the portion of the first-floor unit within a three-unit building. This is in the RB zone, Ward six. Is there somebody here to present the application? So, please approach the mic, adjust the microphone to your comfort level, and the floor is yours, sir, but please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Weiverson Rojo, sixty-seven and sixty-five Gilman Street, Nashville, New Hampshire.
You may present your application.
Yeah, I imply, I ask for permission to my wife. She's been a graduate of esthetician for three years, and she was not, she was not working at all, and now she had a premature baby, and now she starts to back up and work. And we decided to ask for permission to open her office inside our home that is in the sixty-seven Gilman Street. We have like a big three rooms there where we're gonna, where she gonna work, and that's the, that's what I'm asking for, permission to her to work in those two rooms that we have in there.
Does anyone have any questions of the applicant? Mr. Courier.
Yeah, I was just wondering, has this, how long has this business been in operation? It looks like it's been in operation for a while.
No, she's never been in operation because she graduated three years ago, but we have a premature baby, so we, she couldn't have time to, to work, so she never worked. She have a license for New Hampshire, Massachusetts, but she never worked because she's taking care of the baby, and now that he's, he's big now, so he gonna, she's starting doing, she wants to start doing her work. So, we prefer to start doing at home because it's there, and we have like a parking lot that they can park a car, and it's by appointment because we have kids, so it's gonna be by appointment. It's not gonna be like a lot of people's coming in, it's appointment, and they call. And what she does is, people sometimes, I, I read the letters, and people say, no, but they don't understand what, what she's doing, you know, like, she's not representing any danger or busy for the, for the property where we live because she do like a peeling for face, massage, and cleanup and facial, so that's the kind of work that she does. So, it's not really, a lot of people's gonna come in to, to do some work, have to be by appointment.
I guess I got confused because when I saw the business certificates from the state of New Hampshire, you know, it looks like they're in your name, but she's the registered esthetician, and I think they're going back to twenty-nineteen, and it has, you know, the address of sixty-seven Gilman. So, when I saw that, I thought, well, it's been in operation since at least twenty-nineteen, but you're saying that's not the case.
No. She, she's a licensed for two thousand and nineteen, but she, she never worked.
Okay. And the other question I had is, I, I happen to notice there's two white lines, like for parking, in front of the property, but there's no other white lines on the street. Is that, is there some differentiation, or why are there white lines? Have they been there for a while, or?
Yeah, we don't have lines yet because last year, the city has a big work around my property, and they broke all the asphalt and everything, all the driveways, and they never fixed it. So, I did my part on my side. I fixed with the cement, and then like the next year, I called for the City Hall and say, like, my driveway look a mess, and they come and they put like asphalt on the top of the driveway, but it never been fixed before. So, I fixed my size of the garage, but I never paint. I just fix it for all the holes and stuff because in the snow time, it's hard to clean up. So, then I cover with the concrete, but I didn't did it any line yet.
Okay. And then, it was unclear to me, how many, are there three units in the building?
Three units.
Which is where you live and propose the business, or is it three units and a business?
It's three units and a business. It's with the business. It's three units total. They say sixty-seven, sixty-five, and sixty-five A.
Okay. And then, of those three units, which one would, if this were approved, would, would this be one of those three?
Will be in the middle, the sixty-five, the sixty-five. The middle one.
Okay. And then the other question is, I, I think that you're the applicant, but you're not the owner of the property?
I am the owner of the property.
Okay. And how long have you owned it?
Three years.
Okay. All right, I think that's it for me for the moment.
Mr. Boucher.
It wasn't clear. Mr. Courier asked, what unit do you live in?
Yeah, I have a company of painting construction.
Yeah, which unit do you live in? Do you live in the top floor, the bottom?
The median, the second floor.
The second floor, okay. All right. Thank you.
I guess I have a few more questions.
Certainly, go ahead.
So, how many off-street, is there parking on-street at night in this, on Gilman?
Not on Gilman Street. It's in the other street on the side.
Okay. And how many off-street or on-your-property parking spaces are there?
How many spaces has on it?
Yeah.
Like eight, eight and plus the garage, but I got, the garages that is closed, I don't use it because I stock my materials in it, so I don't use the garages.
Okay. So, there's eight off-street parking spaces?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. I think that's it for me at the moment.
Okay. Does anyone else have? Oh, Mr. Minkara.
So, I, I noticed that someone parks on the lawn at least some of the time on, on the grass that's towards Gilman Street.
Yeah.
So, do you consider, is that considered a parking space?
It's not a parking space. I didn't notice until yesterday when I read the letter, they say a car from Massachusetts. What car from Massachusetts? No people from Massachusetts here. But the girl that work with the other girl that lives in a, in a third floor, she's, they meet together, so she was parking it and they leaving, but then she leaves the three, so I, I never noticed because I live early and back night, so I never noticed to see it. And then I watched the camera, I saw a white car, a white Explorer that is parking in there, but that is not a parking lot.
Does anyone else have any questions for the applicant? Yes, Mr. Boucher.
So, just the impact of the business to the neighborhood. So, you're saying it's by appointment, right?
Yeah.
By appointment? And what is the proposed hours of, of your working? I know that in the application, you have over here, Monday through Saturday, right, is the nine to six P.M.?
Yeah.
All right. And then, is the expectation that, that basically gonna be busy all the time, or is there gaps of time? Or she, she, would you, you expect to really, you know, make a, you know, good business out of this and have somebody there?
Yeah, I expect, I expect she's doing good, and then I can buy a bigger property and do better for her.
All right. Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Kanakis.
So, is the plan for parking just to have the two, two spots, one for an employee and one for whatever customers in there at the time?
Yeah.
Okay. And then, two, two parking spots for each of the units within the building?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
You won't.
I don't see any other questions.
That's a question of staff. Question of staff, if I could.
Okay, yes, of course.
So, for Mr. Falk, I think I know the answer, but could you just explain why this would be here for a variance rather than a home occupation?
Well, the use is not permitted in a zoning district at all. So, we determine it was a use variance.
Okay. Thank you. There doesn't appear to be any more questions, so I'm going to ask if there's anybody in the audience who would like to speak in favor of this application. Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none, is there anybody here in the audience who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? Seeing none, I'm going to ask on Zoom, is there anybody here who would like to speak with questions, comments, concerns, or opposition to this application? I don't see anyone. We have a number of emails that have come in that are in opposition to the application. Do they need to be all read into the record? Do you want names? What's the best way to accommodate this?
Has the applicant, has the applicant seen those letters?
Have you seen the emails?
Yeah, I received, received one email with five letters.
Okay. Yep, that would be it.
We did four of them to him.
No, four.
Oh, four, I'm sorry.
There's only four.
You should definitely identify the name and address of each person, and I guess it's up to you to decide whether or not you want to read it, if you want to paraphrase it.
Okay, I might.
Couple of them are pretty short, and one, one's rather lengthy, but.
Yeah. All right, then, what I will do is, let's see, I have an email here from Paula Gothier at one-hundred Gilman Street, and she is opposed to the use variance, and the reason is the neighborhood is a residential area, not zoned for business. And she said that's why she moved here, and she has concerns over more cars parking at the house. We have another email from Margarita Zacoli, and she lives at nineteen Sawyer Street, and it's lacking in parking for its primary residents and their visitors. She says she sees several Massachusetts registered commercial vehicles for a painting business. Overflowing garbage cans amount of street parking trash and disturbance a new office may create is something that would not, not only tarnish the neighborhood, in her opinion, but also disturb everyday life for the residents. And she's concerned about the diminishing house value. We have one from Jean Dearborn, but it does not list her address.
No, at the end of the message it does.
Excuse me?
It does at the end of the message, one-twenty-two Gilman.
Oh, I see. It's within the body. It was embedded. It's one-twenty-two Gilman Street, and she's concerned about parking on the intersection. She said cars go fast through there now, and there's children and animals, and the trash is an issue for her. Parking on the grass is common, so she does not approve it for that reason. Alice Layton, and she lives on Gilman Street. She does not indicate which number Gilman Street. She said the present occupants of the building parked their vehicles on the front grass, obscuring a driver on Gilman Street from being able to see oncoming traffic coming on to Sawyer Street, even after obeying the stop sign. She said the surrounding, the building itself is very limited. It is unsightly and often cluttered with trash. And then, the last one I have is from Kimberly Silverman, and she is at one-oh-one-and-a-half She said the residence has gone from a two-unit to a three-unit. She said she assumes the unit is in the third unit's in the basement because there is a makeshift concrete driveway that was added and what looks like an entrance to the basement. She said the driveway is very tiny, only a small car could fit in it. She said standing on Gilman looking towards the back of the house is a huge pile of trash that has been there for at least a year, and she included a picture. Standing on Sawyer Street, side one can see a long pile of broken-up hot tub that has also been there for at least a year. There are usually cars parked on the grass in a small yard. They extend over the sidewalk, blocking the way for pedestrians. There are also cars parked nearer the corner, corner, also on the lawn on a daily basis, obstructing the view of drivers at the stop sign. It creates a dangerous situation. I also note that while it is a three-unit dwelling, there are four satellite dishes installed on the corner of the house. Does she mean, does that mean there are more than three families that reside there? If it becomes an esthetician's office, customer parking will add to the problem. There are so many driveways on Gilman and Sawyer that parking is already limited. When people do park on the street, they are often too close to the corner, creating another hazard. There is a beauty salon further down Gilman Street, which is a single-family house and owner occupied. The owner takes good care of the property. Unlike the owner at sixty-five, sixty-six Gilman, customer parking does not create a hazard at the salon. And that's basically what the comments were. And you now, sir, would have five minutes to speak to the concerns of the neighbors, mostly the parking and the accumulation of that trash that seems to worry these, your neighbors.
Yeah. The hot tub that she's talking about is not a hot tub. It's a big tank that, because I do fresh water in houses, like vinyl houses, so it's a tank that is in a corner. It's not, it's not a tub. Like, when the house have no, like, have a well water, so I have to bring that with me so I can power wash the house because I can't use the house, the water for the house. So, that's not a hot tub. And what else is, what else she say?
The parking and accumulate, well, she called it, they called it accumulation of trash in the backyard, unless that's that tanker.
Yeah, it's right. The last year, I think somebody called and say that we have a trash in it, but it's a couch that I can't, I can't return it because it's, it's a complicated situation. Like, I bought something from Bob's, and I can't, I'm waiting for them to approve to return, and I can't throw it away until they approve, so, and I, somebody for the City Hall, that was last year, in December, I think, they went there, and they asked me to remove, said, I'm not gonna remove, that's my yard, and I need the couch, I can't throw it away until I figure this out, so. And then he say, well, it's in your yard, so it, it's fine. So, somebody went, that you see, who make this complaint about trash. But it's what I say, that's not a tub, that's a, is a tank, and that's a sofa that I can't throw it away until I figure out with them what to, what to do.
And then the other issue was the parking on the lawn.
Yeah, I have a lot of parking space in there. Pretty much it's empty. If anybody's passed by during the day, they're gonna see that it's, it's a lot of parking space, but it's what I say, it could be the same car that she's talking about or he's talking about, but.
Did you see?
I plant the grass, and I cut the grass, so I don't want nobody on my grass, so.
Did you see the picture that was sent with the white car, and then, I don't know if that's still the same property?
Yeah, that's the car that I saw in the camera, because I have camera in the whole property, so I saw that car.
And you don't know who this?
No, I know who it is, so I told them to not park there anymore. If they park, park in a garage.
And there's no, no one else here to talk about this? So, questions, Mr. Boucher.
I think, I think the question was asked, I, I think you heard hot tub, I think it was a hot tub that you were asking about? Hot tub or hot tub?
Yeah, I think hot tub, hot tub.
Okay, so there's, there's tar, there's broken up.
Sorry, it's my duty, Jersey accent.
Driveway material on your property. This is a hot tub, black.
Asphalt.
Asphalt.
Yeah, the one that I told you, in the side, last year when they do the construction, I removed all the peeling, the peeling, and I put in the side of my, of my, my driveway until I removed. That wasn't like, they finished it up in November, and then while it's snowing, so I didn't remove yet. But it's not in the street, it's all the way in the back of my garage, so. I thought it's hot tub, as you say.
And then, the, the, the eight spots that you're talking about for parking, because again, it came up by, by testimony from the people who wrote in. I've noticed, and again, this picture here, I've noticed that some of the cars are, that they, they are blocking the sidewalk.
No, they are not. They are not blocking it.
So, when they park, when they park in the cement part that you have cemented, if you, if your garage, if you're facing your garage left, and there's vehicles parked, there's vehicles parked near the door of the house, right in front of the house?
Mm-hmm.
It's a cemented area, right?
Yeah, it is a space.
The, the, the back of the cars have, are overhanging onto the sidewalk. And the pictures here showing that, too.
Well, it all depends who park. Pretty much I am who park the van, like, the van that's in there is my van. Sometimes I park, like, if I wanna come, like, get out quickly, I'm just gonna park a little bit and get my food and get out, but easy space enough. park a little bit and get my food and get out, but easy space enough for the van and for any car over there.
Right, so, but where that cemented area is, you're counting that as some of your parking spots, right?
Say it again?
Where the, where there was cement added, right, wherever it's shorter, you're including that as your parking spots?
Yeah, like, everything that was, there was, there was broken down, because there was asphalt all the way down, so everything that was broke, I remove, and I put a cement. Not remove everything, but all the holes, I covered up with cement. There was asphalt in there before.
Mr. Boucher, is this the picture you're referring to? That has the car, the back end?
Yeah. There's a black and white.
The one in your packet.
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's a black and white, yes.
I printed.
And on the GAS map.
Yeah.
Are you okay?
Thank you, thank you.
Mr. Minkara has a question, and he would like to ask.
So, if you couldn't use this space for a business, what would you use that space for, those rooms?
It's her room, because she, like, the type of work that she does, like, she needs the two rooms, because if she, if she starts doing, like, a peeling in one person, you have to let it stay, if she attended two persons in an hour. So she has to put the stuff on the people's face and leave them over there waiting for, and the other room, if she get another person.
That's not my question. The space where you want to put the business, those rooms on the first floor, if you can't put a business there, what would you use that, that space for?
That's, that's rooms, that's a room, that's a bedroom, or it's a living room, it's a lot of room.
So would it be part of the apartment on the first floor, or would it be a separate apartment?
No, it would be part of the apartment.
On the first floor?
On the first, on the second floor.
I guess I'm confused.
No, I'm confused.
So this business would be on the second floor?
On the second floor, yeah.
In the apartment that you're currently living in?
Yeah.
I see, so this is a part of?
Of the house.
Your own apartment?
Yes.
Okay, that, okay.
So, just to verify, the three units are where? Where's, so you got one unit on the second floor?
Yep.
Is the first floor got two units, or do you have a unit in the basement?
One unit.
One unit in the second.
One unit in the first, one in the second, and then the third.
One in the basement.
No, one in the third.
No, the third, the third floor.
Third floor.
Basement, first floor, second floor?
No basement, first floor.
No basement apartment?
No, it does have a basement, but it's not apartment.
But it's not apartment, okay, now.
Okay, got it.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, so the third floor.
Because I think they did addition, before I bought, before I buy the property, they did addition, that's why I never, they never find, like, 65A. Even when they try Conca, they never find, but it is, because it's a meter there, so it is a 65A.
Okay, I got it, now I can do it.
I'm sorry, so can I ask just one more question?
Sure.
So, the part, the rooms that you're going to use for the business, this is connected to your apartment, right?
To my apartment, yes.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so it's not separate, and there is no apartment in the basement, and I apologize for saying hot tub.
Well, I, I thought it was hot tub.
Yeah, well, I speak New Jersey, and you here, wherever.
Well, when I read, I saw hot tub, too, that's why I thought it was hot tub, not, like, asphalt pieces.
Yeah, well, that's okay, it's all, it's all good. Any other questions? Okay, I think we're good, I'm going to close the public hearing, and I'm going to open the public meeting. You can sit, or you, you know, if you're comfortable, go ahead and sit back down, we are through the public portion of it. Mr. Carrier?
Well, we have, you know, an applicant that makes a case that it's a low-key business, and it's, you know, not going to have any impact on the neighborhood, and fits right in. We have quite a bit of testimony from abutters that say it's a stressed neighborhood with stressed parking, and the current property is, is got heavy use, and this is over the top. So, data here, data here, I'm stuck in the middle. I mean, I, I, I mean, I did a site walk to this place, I guess, if the decision were taken, I'd say, I want to go back and take a look a couple, several times, over the course of days, and say, if this is as stressed as, as the abutters say, then I think it doesn't support the use variance, if, if there's no problem parking, and it's just maybe some, you know, as the applicant says, that it's just a minor business which will go unseen, perhaps, you know, I think that warrants a use variance, but I'm stuck, so I'm looking forward, hopefully there's, can add some help to my dilemma.
Mr. Kanakis, and Mr. Kanakis, you will be voting on this case.
I was flipping back and forth pretty consistently throughout the application, but ultimately, I think I'm leaning in favor, largely based on the fact that there, there is sufficient parking there if utilized properly, and one-person salon, having one to two customers at a time, would be a fairly low-impact business. A lot of the opposition wasn't directly related to the application, so I think based on what I've seen, I'm leaning in favor.
Thank you. Mr. Shaw?
Yeah, I'm likewise in favor, I think I pretty much echo Mr. Kanakis's points.
Mr. Boucher?
I'm actually struggling with this one, I'm on the fence for this one. I, I drove by this place half a dozen times, only because I don't live too far away, but I just really wanted to see it. There's, though, there's three units there already, and then, I know we're looking for in-home occupation. I'm, I'm just not really comfortable with the whole parking situation, it's not, it's not tradition, it's not, I think, what is really acceptable, meaning to say, is what we create for parking, and maybe, maybe I'm just, you know, I, you know, after driving by several times, I'm seeing things a little bit differently than if I had maybe gone by a couple of times, because I did go by half, half those times, it was very quiet, and there wasn't much going on, and then, you know, different time of the day, it was something different. So, I, I don't know if an extra visit is going to make a difference in the neighborhood, I just, I'm really struggling with the property itself, with the situation that commonly exists, meaning to say, is the, the compactness of the property, that the number of units are already there, so I'm just, I'm just not real sure.
Thank you. Mr. Minkara?
I definitely struggle with this one, but I, I am leaning in favor, although I get to vote on this one, I think if there were to be a motion to support it, I think a condition to restrict parking on the grass would definitely be in order. What, what inclines me to support it, and it's a change of what I initially thought, is that the proposed business, I really do see, as kin to a home occupation, in that it's not converting one of the units to a business use, it's actually a business that will be conducted within the residence of the owner of the property, and it is attached to their, their dwelling. So, I, I think if it were a separate freestanding business, it would give me much more pause, but I think in this case, I think the scope of it is really, really limited, and that's what inclines me to support it.
Thank you. Well, as someone who has gotten facials and gone and done that, it's, I'm inclined to support this. Gilman Street and the whole area there, it's, they're small, and it is what it is, it's the neighborhood, it's Pine Street, it's all those streets right there, that's just what it is. But, the business itself, being within the home, you wouldn't know that someone was coming in to have something, you know, for, to visit or to visit, if they were coming in to partake in the business, or they were coming to visit the people. It's within the home, it's not a noisy business, it's not something that's going to create any kind of odors or whatever that's going to detract, it's just a small, very, very individualized process that takes place within someone's home. And so, I, I'm in favor of the application. I don't see it as impact, having a great impact to the environment or to the neighborhood, because I, too, go by there a lot, and you, it's, you either see a bunch of cars or you don't. It is what it is. I don't know that one or two cars is going to make a huge impact, as Mr. Boucher himself said. So, would somebody care to make a motion? Mr. Shaw, thank you.
I'll make a motion on behalf of the owner, Wiegerson Araho, at 65-67 Gilman Street, Street 94, Lot 74, requesting use variance from Land Use Code, Section 190-13, Table 15-1, Number 102, to allow an esthetician's office in a portion of a first-floor unit within a three-unit building. I think we did learn that it's really the second floor, on testimony, this is in the RV zone. The use variance is needed to enable the applicant to propose use of the property, given the special conditions of the property, benefits sought by the applicant cannot be achieved by some other method reasonably feasible for the applicant to pursue, other than the variance. The usage will be within one of the existing units, as actually the owners occupy it in the three-unit building. We know from testimony that it's going to be a very limited, basically a minor home business type, a minor occupied home business, or however the proper term is going on here. The applicant has noted that there is sufficient parking, where there'd be two parking spaces allocated for this business. It's within the spirit and intent of the ordinance, there's no indication of negative effects on surrounding parcel property values, it's not contrary to public interest, and substantial justice will be served. I'll add the stipulation, Mr. McCarron noted, that there would be no parking allowed on the grass, that there should be sufficient parking already, by definition, as the applicant has noted, and with that, I'll move to approve this variance.
Hi, Mr. Kanakis, thank you for your second, and, Mr. Shaw, thank you for that addition. Mr. Carrier, how do you vote?
Mr. Carrier votes not in favor.
Mr. Kanakis, how do you vote?
Mr. Kanakis votes in favor.
Mr. Shaw, how do you vote?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher, how do you vote?
Mr. Boucher votes not in favor.
And Maryam McKay votes in favor. That is three votes. Mr. Araho, your variance has been granted. Anyone has 30 days with which to appeal a decision made by this board. Should you have any questions, comments, concerns, please re-refer back to Mr. Carter Falk or Ms. Kate Poirier within the Planning Department. And please also note that parking on the lawn has been prohibited within the approval of the variance. So, congratulations, and thank you for presenting your case.
I appreciate it, it's so the only, it's not a busy, busy area to, like, the way to say, like, this week, we have a lot of new businesses around, and we only, we only have space, why, I have my own people, I'm not looking to, in terms of, to the area.
Thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you, and now, we will continue on with the business of the meeting. We have no motions for rehearing. Does anybody see any regional impact in the upcoming agenda for our next zoning board meeting?
Question from, is that bordering Hollis and Mass, or?
It borders, Mass, it's the Dunstable Land Trust down there, so we would have to notify them.
Okay.
I lost it, I'll make notes.
I guess I'll make a note on the record that staff will notify the Dunstable Land Trust that this application is on the border, and other, I'm guessing other than that, there's not a regional impact.
Yeah, I would agree with this.
Okay. Does, oh, I have to do this. Let me grab my sheet. Keep getting, we have to do everything by. Okay. Well, it would be J. Mr. McCarron, do you see any regional impact?
Mr. McCarron does not.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw does not.
Mr. Boucher?
No, I do not.
Mr. Carrier?
I do not.
And Maryam McKay also does not. Just want to get that on the record. And the minutes, we have minutes from March 22nd. Is there any edits to our minutes? Mr. Shaw?
Just in the top where it says March 2nd.
I already changed that.
I figured it out, it would be clocked by now.
It should say.
The curse of the twos, too many twos.
Okay, we have it.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw, yeah, I did notice that, after it was already sent out, like, I just changed it, but, yeah, it is corrected.
Do we have any other adjustments to our minutes? If not, if it's all right, I will make a motion to accept the minutes, as presented, with the one edit.
I'm going to change that, because it's already.
And Mr. Shaw seconds that. Back again I go. Mr. Kanakis, how do you vote?
I, in favor.
Do you approve the minutes?
Yes.
Mr. Shaw?
Mr. Shaw votes in favor.
Mr. Boucher?
Mr. Boucher votes in favor.
Mr. Carrier?
Mr. Carrier votes in favor.
And I also vote in favor.
I just have a quick question to the board, I noticed at one point, Matt Sullivan was on Zoom.
He was on, from the beginning, he was at the beginning.
So, I put on here that he's present on Zoom, on the staff attendance.
I didn't see him, I apologize.
He was, he has left, I think he's downstairs in the Board of Aldrin meeting, I think he's doing both meetings tonight, so.
Then, I think we should include him.
But he was here.
Lucky him.
I know.
If he's that much of a golfer punishment, I think we should go ahead.
Yeah, you should say, partially present on Zoom.
Well, how could he be partially present? Half of him was there.
The right eye, left eye, I think.
[laughing].
Two Zoom meetings, go, two Zooms in one, I've done that.
He's got us on his phone.
Actually, I think I hit three one time.
Now, did every, did everybody get the notice for the conference? Okay. If there's no further business that needs to come before the board, I would be willing to adjourn the meeting at 8:30, 8:00 PM.
Done.
Done? So moved.
Thank you, everybody.
Well, thanks. Happy Easter, everyone.
We have a, we have somebody in the audience celebrating.
Everybody.